Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this joint City Council and City Planning Commission meeting. And Denise, may we have, yes?
Do you want to do the pledge of allegiance first? Oh, okay. All righty then.
May we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Smith? You're okay. Councilmember Dennehy. Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Hockes. Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Brandon Smith. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Here.
Okay. Chairman Maloney. Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Ledoux. Commissioner Moss. Commissioner Suther.
Here.
Commissioner Randy Smith.
Thank you. The purpose of this meeting tonight is to have a discussion of draft zoning subdivision and development regulations, our current Title 17. Ryan, are you leading off on this?
Well, Patrick ran to go see where the consultant is. It looks like they have not logged in yet, so making sure that they have all the correct login information.
Oh, great. So will you want us to just take a couple minutes until we can sort that out? We'll pause this until we get our consultants on the line. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting back to order, and I would note, just for the record, that we've had Jackie Wells from House Seal Levine join us. We also have our attorney, Corey Hoffman, online. And present in the room tonight with us is our councilmember-to-be, Amy Schmisher. And with that, Patrick?
So, I apologize for this having to go to two meetings, but obviously, this is very important stuff that we're talking about here, and we want you to take your time to work through all of this, to ask us questions, because there are a lot of policy issues associated with this. I handed out to each of you that came in one of these memos here, and this summarized the feedback that I had received from, on the food trucks and food carts in the 200 to 700 block of Main Street, as well as the monument signage limitations. And I also forwarded this to Jackie, so I believe Jackie has this as part of her email. Jackie, can we test your microphone to make sure it's working? I'm not sure that you're, we're hearing you.
Are you all able to hear me?
Yeah, we're hearing you now.
Patrick, can you send me the memo, please?
Sure, let me go upstairs and get that.
And thank you for that memo, Patrick. The, it looks to me very encouraging on food trucks and carts on Main Street, and it looks like that we have clear and convincing direction from council on signs. And I say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek.
Should I go ahead and get started with the presentation?
Corey, I just sent that, so you should have it here shortly.
Thank you.
And Jackie, I believe you can go ahead and get started.
All right, thank you so much. All right, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Now let me know if you're able to see the presentation here.
We can.
Very good, all right. So, thank you all again for having House Levine back this evening to go through the second part of the Articles 6 through 12 that we started to go through Monday on the 24th. So, that evening, we got through Chapter 8, the Planning and Development Standards. But before we jump back into the review of the draft chapters, wanted to circle back on a couple of items that we discussed having continued conversation on. So those would be the food trucks on Main Street that Patrick and a couple of the councilmembers have alluded to, the maximum size of the monument signs, as well as our triggers for plan developments. So based on the feedback that Patrick received on food trucks on Main Street, this is the policy direction that we will move towards, you know, based on your feedback, of course. So food trucks would be allowed on Main Street at the invitation of a Main Street merchant only, and only after receiving consent from adjacent restaurants or bars. They would be limited to three times per week, per block of Main Street, so that would be between the 200th block and the 700th block. The food trucks would be allowed to occupy a maximum of three parking spaces, which they could reserve the morning of the food truck arrival using traffic cones. And then the use or reservation of the parking space would be allowed for 24 consecutive hours only, so they would need to move the food truck after the hours of operation, you know, when they're set up and they're open. So any comments, any conversation we want to have on these kind of points for our food trucks on Main Street?
The, so, I have a question on the limit of three times per week per block of Main Street. Is that, is that per business? Would that be per business?
I would think that would be per food truck, three times per week, or I guess for the block, three, three times on the block.
So, north side or south side?
I guess we could say three times each, three times on the north side, three times on the south side. If we're saying that, for instance, a restaurant across the street doesn't count, that was one of the comments that we got back in, I think you could have it three times on one side of the street, three times on another side of the street.
Or just, you know, three times for the 600 block of Main Street, and that would include both the north and south side.
Oh, for the entire stretch?
Yes.
Three times per week. Does that, does that, would that give the businesses that are making use of that now, would allow them to continue as they're doing, or would that create any restrictions on them at this?
I would believe it would allow them to continue doing what they're doing. You know, they, the, most of the bars or businesses that are taking advantage of this, they're, they're mixing it up with different food trucks each time, just to create variety and different reasons for people to come back.
Sure. Okay, great. Any questions? Yes, DeeDee?
So, I get, going back to that, three times per week, so is it like, like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or is it literally like what you said, Patrick, or was like, one truck could be there three times a week, and another truck could be there another different days of the week, is that?
So it would be, in a particular block, you could have food trucks there three days per week, and the week is obviously Sunday to Saturday.
It, just food truck in general, or like, you could have three days with one food truck vendor, another three days with a different food truck vendor, and potentially have a food truck there every single night? Because that could be abused and excessive.
And I think that, you know, that'd be, you know, guidance or a policy discussion, you know, whether or not you want to limit it to, you know, the food truck can be there three times per week, or a business can have a food truck three times per week.
Well, I think in the conversation, when pe, businesses came to us, it was more like we recognized this is kind of a special thing, it's not an everyday thing. And in respect to the adjacent restaurants, I think we need to be careful that we strike a balance that's still respectful to our brick and mortar restaurants and bars. So, three days for every truck per week seems like a lot.
The way I read the feedback, it was three food trucks per block per week.
So a total of three, so it didn't matter who was, who wanted it, you only could have three total on a block?
Correct.
Even if it was three different businesses, wanting a food truck?
Even if it was three different businesses, if you had three different trucks, one on Tuesday, one on Thursday, one on Friday, that's?
That was it.
That's the allotment for the week.
I think it would probably be better to start small and then adjust accordingly.
How is this going to be tracked?
That will be something that we'll, we'll probably need the, the business owners to reach out and let us know, or if we spot a food truck out there, we simply note, okay, that's one time this week that a food truck has been in that block.
Perhaps you could require the approval letters be sent to you, so that?
That would be helpful, yes.
So that you know, then you know that there, there has been written approval, because that's part of what we're saying, is they, they need written approval to show up from a business and any adjacent similar businesses. And if you, if you, if the requirement is that you receive a copy of those letters, then we have the start of a mechanism.
So many communities will require a temporary use permit for food trucks. We could have a specific food truck permit, if you'd be interested in having something more specific for food trucks, but I think the temporary use permit that we have proposed would also cover food trucks, whether they be on Main Street or on the numbered streets.
So, so that is what we are doing now. We, our temporary use permits are exclusively for the food trucks right now. We don't really have provisions for something like a temporary vendor stand or something like that, and I know that's, that's being worked into the new code. But yes, we, we do this process right now where the, the temporary use permit is exclusively for food trucks. When it's granted, it's granted for a period of one calendar year, and then they've got the ability to park on any municipally, any, any right-of-way, any public right-of-way within the city, except currently between the 200 and 700 block of Main. They can park on private property in the parking lot of any commercial business that is willing to let them park there, or if they get a park permit, they can operate in a municipally-owned park.
And those sound good to me. What, any other comments? Okay?
Okay, so real quickly, before we move on, did we want to establish a separate permitting process for food trucks on Main Streets, that you all had that tracking mechanism for the time restrictions?
I, I heard you all say you would like to put some mechanisms in place to track food trucks coming to those blocks on Main Street, yes?
Yes.
Okay, very good, we can get that set up. All right. So next, we wanted to go through the results of the voting for our monument sign standards. So unless we hear some argument otherwise, or some discussion otherwise, we'll go with those choices that had the most votes. So for the single tenant monument signs in the NC, CB, and open space districts, we will go with choice two, the 15-square-foot sign, so that's that middle option. Then, for the single tenant monument signs in the GC, BP, and I districts, I'll be going with choice three, so that's the 50-square-foot sign. Then for multi-tenant in the NC, CB, and open space, we're going with choice three, the 40-square-foot sign. And then, multi-ten in the GC, BP, and I districts, going with, again, choice three, the 100-square-foot sign. Any comments or discussion we want to have on the other choices, or anyone having different opinions they want to share?
I think, I think that we'd be good to go, move forward with those choices.
All right. Next, wanted to revisit the triggers for plan development. So this was discussed during our last meeting, and the debate or the discussion was on whether, you know, what those triggers should be for the major plan development versus the minor plan development. So based on the conversation that we had, John and I discussed this matter further, and we thought that the, the size restriction on the different plan development types would really make the most sense. The location-based triggers, so if it's located in the downtown or located along Highway 50, we didn't think would be quite as relevant in Canyon City as a size restriction would be, since we're really seeing a lot of these types of plan developments happening in, in more undeveloped areas. So we really think the, the size trigger would make the most sense, the best way to differentiate between the major and minor plan development processes. But to ensure that developers have the flexibility that they need and that you all want to offer, we're proposing that the major plan development process, which allows you to develop the plan development district, if you are fewer than 20 acres in size or development would be, then you could request to go through the major plan development process, and then that could be approved by the zoning administrator. So you would still have the option for a major plan development, but you would really need to kind of state your case that the major plan development process is more appropriate for your site than the minor plan development process. And that would just be an administrative decision done by the zoning administrator.
Any comments on that from the commission or council? So I think we're, we're good with that.
All right. So then that brings us to the draft chapters overview. We're gonna jump right back in on that Chapter 9 where we left off. And so the biggest change that we're proposing to your subdivision processes, excuse me, is to the, the types of subdivisions that would be considered. So major subdivisions and minor subdivisions are two processes you have currently, but we are proposing that the lot split process that you have currently be consolidated with the minor subdivision. So the difference between the major subdivision and minor subdivision is up here on the screen. So for the major subdivision, it's a project where you're dedicating public right-of-way, what's greater than 10 acres, or you're creating more than five lots. And then for minor subdivisions, you'd be creating fewer than five lots, consolidating two or more lots, adjusting a lot line or boundary, correcting any errors or omissions on a final plat, facilitating conveyance of title of parcels, and facilitating the conveyance of a planning area within a major plan development. So first, wanting to go through the proposed outline for the major subdivision process. This is a little more streamlined than what you all have currently. And so first, we would start with the optional sketch plan, so that would allow a developer to come to you all and get a review on the high-level concept plan, which they could then, you know, make tweaks on before there's a lot of investment into the project. The next step would be the preliminary plat. That would be reviewed by the planning commission and decided upon by the city council after public hearings with both bodies. And then the final plat would be completely approved administratively, if it substantially conforms to the approved preliminary plat. So that's the minor, or the biggest change with the major subdivision process is the administrative approval of the final plat, if it's in substantial conformance with the approved preliminary plat. Any questions or concerns about the proposed changes to the major subdivision process?
Don't see any here.
I've got one question for Patrick. This change, what, what does this do to timing to get, get something like this through?
So the, the big question in that is gonna be, does someone want to try and merge doing a preliminary and a sketch plan at the same time? If they do, they can cut one step out of the process. But this will require, as far as the sketch and preliminary, it will have to go to public hearing before Planning Commission in both cases, it will have to go to public hearing before council in both cases. So this could be a process that's 60 to 90 days, or maybe slightly longer than that in each step, if you didn't combine them. The final plat would remain administrative in process, however, it would have to be, there'd have to be a finding made administratively, that there have not been any significant changes to what was approved at preliminary plan.
So he says 60 to 90 days per process?
Per process, if they don't merge them, if they don't do sketch and preliminary combined.
How long does it take now to get through this process?
Well, we haven't really had any of them in the three years I've been here.
Real quick clarification, the sketch plan, as it's written currently, is proposed to be optional, so the developer could choose whether or not to go through that process. And there would not be a public notice at this, or a public hearing, excuse me, at the sketch plan phase. There would only be a public notice and public hearing at the preliminary plat phase, and that would be in front of the Planning Commission first, and then the city council after that. So there would be two public hearings, both at the preliminary plat phase.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, looks like we're good with that.
All right. So moving into the minor subdivision process, so again, this is a process that would be fully reviewed and decided upon by the zoning administrator. So we would start with a pre-application conference, the developer would then submit their minor subdivision plat, the zoning administrator would review that and act upon it, and then there would be post-approval actions, and then plat recordation. So that would be the minor subdivision plat process. Any questions or comments?
Now, this does simplify everything, including what we currently do with minor subdivisions, which is both Planning Commission and council public hearings. This does, has everything handled administratively, and the, the big break between the two of them is going to be, in a lot of cases, are there public improvements that the city is ultimately going to have to accept for ownership and maintenance? Because the only way the city can accept those is by fiat of council.
Questions or comments? So that, the, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we are, you know, streamlining this. The, the difference, and this, this is the 20 acres that we're talking about here, 20 above and?
No, this is for, this is for subdivisions. Where the, the line of demarcation is 10 acres or greater pushes you into a major subdivision.
Thank you.
Right-of-way dedications pushes you into a, a, a major subdivision.
Okay? Okay, Jackie?
All right. And so next, moving into Chapter 10, the zoning standards. So this chapter includes general application provisions that would be applicable to administrative review and action procedures, as well as those that would be brought in front of boards and commissions. Then we get into the administrative review and action procedures, list those out and detail the procedures that are associated with them. Then we have our general review and action procedures for board and commission, so that goes through things like public notice, and the different responsibilities for review and decision-making. And then we have separate sections for special review use permits, text and map amendments and variances, and then last but not least, development agreements.
Jackie, should we, do we, if we have comments on Chapter 9, do you want those now, or do you want to do those after your presentations?
I apologize on Chapter 9?
Yes.
Oh yes, please go ahead, I apologize for moving on too quickly.
Okay, I've, I've got a couple, but they're, they're mainly editorial in nature, that on page 75 of 138, or 1 of 13, under 17.09.01.0 purpose, the last bullet there is actually a heading and not a part of the paragraph.
Okay.
And then, just this is more formatting stuff, the, and, and this is a general comment, but, so, or a global comment, that, that we, we're using two styles. We're using a colon followed by commas, and we're using a colon followed by semicolons with both ending in a period, when you have a list, and it, the, the, my preference, of course, is a colon followed by semicolons with a final period. But there are multiple places through here where you, where we switch back and forth between both styles. Page 80 of 138, under B1, is an example. And on the next page, page 81, under C, preliminary plat or pre-application conference, a similar comment there.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely revise that, make that consistent throughout the document.
Great, that's a global comment then. And then on the final page, under subdivision standards for review, under E, compatibility with adjacent land uses. And it says, "The subdivision includes uses which are generally compatible and consistent with the uses of adjacent parcels. If the uses are not generally compatible, all adverse impacts have been mitigated through," and then it goes on to list what those mitigations can be that protect uses, uses within the development and surrounding properties. And, and I just have a, I just have a, a problem with the "all adverse impacts" phrase, that, number one, when you're talking about identifying impacts or something like saying "all," always, as that, that always raised my hackles, as someone who is subject to a lot of different regulations, without being specific, because an adverse impact could be very minor, but still, you know, and perhaps trivial in nature, but would, under this language, still require mitigation. And so I would suggest that instead of saying "all adverse impacts," that we say "incompatible uses have been mitigated," because that is the sense of the sentence. We're talking about things that are generally compatible and consistent, but if there are uses not generally compatible, incompatible uses have been mitigated. And I, because I think that's the intent of the, of the, of the regulation.
Yeah, that's correct. So the, the adverse impacts that would be caused by the incompatible land use would be mitigated. We can maybe soften the language, so it's adverse impacts have been minimized, rather than, you know, completely mitigated, if there are instances or cases where that won't be feasible. But I do think calling out the adverse impacts that are caused by the conflicting or incompatible land uses would be important to ensure that you have the ability in the teeth there to ensure that there's adequate buffering or distancing, or whatever it might be, to help mitigate those, those impacts.
Sure, it sounds like that, that language works for me.
Awesome.
Any other comments on Chapter 9 from anyone? Okay?
I, I do actually have a couple, if I could. In the, in the notice requirements for major subdivision, can we check and make sure that it actually matches the notice requirement for final plats? I'm not sure it does. It looks like it's inconsistent. And I'm, I'm just wondering if the charts can be combined, so applicants don't have to look in two places, one for process and one for notice. I just think it might be an easier, easier for an applicant. I don't know if you want to react to that, or you want me to go through all of these?
Oh, you can go ahead.
Um, on the major and minor subdivision, what about condominiums?
That would be handled under the minor subdivision plat process.
Based on what? I mean, it does, because it doesn't say that.
Okay, we could add that into the, the minor subdivision description.
Corey, when we've had condominium maps come before the city in the last few years, we treated them the same way we would treat a subdivision exemption, so it's an administrative process. The only new level to it is that we're typically requiring some mechanism to accept whatever the common area elements of the plan are, landscaped areas, parking lots, whatever, that are gonna be commonly owned by everyone living within the, the condominium development.
Okay, and again, I guess I don't care, but I think we need to put it in a document, how we're gonna treat them.
Okay, we can get that out and in, no problem.
See, I'm on page nine of thirteen, on the open space plat restriction for the items that are to be submitted to the zoning administrator. Isn't that part of the final plat? Or do we, is there a separate document that is an open space plat restriction that is not part of the final plat?
That is language from the existing ordinance. Patrick, are you familiar with whether that would be a separate plat or part of the final plat?
I believe we would treat it as part of the final plat. We have not had to test this, however, because we haven't had any major subdivisions.
Well, I guess I would take that out, because it is part of the plat. Again, unless there is some other thing that we identify as an open space plat restriction that is not part of the plat.
Perhaps we could discuss that further offline with Patrick and Catherine?
Okay.
And Amy, did you have a comment?
Just on, I don't have my control, see brother, but like, so just on that point, I would think we would still want that line for garden, open space, which will be protected by a plat restriction to be somewhere else in the document, understanding that it may be, maybe is not a separate file that needs to be submitted to the zoning administrator. I think we would still want the, open space will be protected by a plat restriction to ensure that it cannot be subdivided elsewhere in the document.
And the normal method for achieving that is usually some sort of a note on the plat that references this particular parcel that's been created via this plat, and this, this is the restriction as to how it can be used.
Right.
All right, any additional comments on Chapter 9, or should we go ahead and move into Chapter 10?
Sure, Amy.
Thanks so much, John. I just had two additional on page four of thirteen. I think it's, I think it's editorial, but the minor subdivision says "in which all of the following conditions exist", and I think it is "in which any of the following conditions exist". And then I also just noted that there could be some instances in which the two are not mutually exclusive between the major subdivision and the minor subdivision. So we may just want to include a line that says that the major subdivision process takes precedence when one of those conditions are met.
Yeah, those are great points, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, and I think frankly, take a lot of the language that identifies the main subdivision out altogether and say, "It's either a minor subdivision if it meets any of these criteria, or the default is a major."
Or potentially the other way around. If we, if we're trying to limit the number that have to go through the major subdivision process, we could say, "If it meets one of these three criteria, it's major, otherwise it's minor", but I agree with your point, Corey.
Yeah, exactly.
And then I just had one additional question on the following page, page five of thirteen. I just wanted to check if number three, the sketch plan review and recommendation, if that should be an R under City Council, because it's, it's just at the recommendation phase, or if that should be a D for decision-making? Thanks.
So the, for the sketch plan review and recommendation?
Yes, thanks, Jackie.
Yeah, of course, so that should be recommendation at both the Planning Commission and City Council, since there wouldn't be any sort of official decision being made at that stage. It's really more of a consultation to break forward tonight.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready.
All right. So moving into Chapter 10, so we discussed sort of the outline of the chapter, and then started to move into the various types of administrative review that are being included. So first would be site plan review, then conditional use permits, administrative exceptions, sign permits, temporary use permits, and rebuild letters. So these are all processes that you have currently, they have been tweaked for clarity. The rebuild letter is something that was sort of tucked away, hidden in the non-conformity section, and now there's a more clear process established for that, that would be used, you know, when residents are, you know, purchasing a home to help with the mortgage, getting the mortgage, to ensure that if their property is non-conforming, that they would be able to reinvest and rebuild if there was a natural disaster that might occur. We've also clarified for the site plan review and sign permit processes that if there is a site that is on or in a designated historic resource, then they would need to go in front of the Historic Resources Commission to get the certificate of appropriateness prior to receiving the approval for the sign permit or for the site plan. That would also apply to variances. Any questions or concerns on administrative review?
The, I do have a few comments. So I'm looking at page one of twenty-one, under, so we've got, we've got under seventeen-ten-oh-ten, general application provisions, we've got two As. Authority to file and application fees. Under the second A, you've got a, a chapter pound-pound, it's not highlighted, that might get missed in the, in the reference. And I won't repeat my colon, semicolon comments. But maybe I'll give you a copy of these.
Well, you and I did meet about a lot of these last week.
Okay.
I also met with, with Amy yesterday. And I have, for the comments that both of you provided me, I've scanned those and I emailed them to Jackie a little earlier today. So she hasn't had an opportunity to incorporate them into the draft that you already had.
Thank you.
But she is aware of the changes.
Okay, great. One other, I'm not sure that I caught this, because I didn't bring my other marked-up copy. But on page five of twenty-one, under D, as in dog, the permit holder will have fifteen days, should say, the, the sentence should end, "revoking the permit to the Board of Adjustment".
And that was one of the things that, that Amy noted yesterday, so. Between the two of you, we've got it well-covered.
Thank you to the both of you and your thoroughness.
Patrick, under, on page six of twenty-one, under zoning administrator action, I think subsection B is repetitive. I think it's already referenced up above.
Any other comments or questions on the administrative review and action procedures?
The, back on page eleven of twenty-one, I don't, it's like I say, I didn't bring my other marked-up copy. So I'm not sure, hopefully I'm being consistent in my comments here. But the, at the top of the page, seventeen-ten-oh-thirty, it starts off with a B, I think that should be an A.
And as we work to incorporate your comments and revisions to these chapters, we'll also be doing a thorough review of formatting, any type of numbering issues, ensuring that we have all of our references updated. So these are draft documents, but we will, of course, be further refining them, ensuring that we've covered all of those types of typos or, you know, scrivener's errors as we're refining the documents for the adoption process.
Sure, great.
Are we going to go through a process where we make sure that all of the definitions in the definition section are actually used in the ordinance?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Is there any that we have missed so far?
So Corey, if I can address your point, on page six of twenty-one, near the bottom of the page, zoning administrator action, I believe paragraphs A and B are describing two different points. A is describing what action happens when it's determined that the application is incomplete. B is describing what action can be taken if the project is denied, or the request is denied.
I think you have that in a number of different places where it says the same thing, and I thought part of the goal here was to be concise. And I wonder if there is an opportunity to consolidate zoning administrator action so that it is those two things regardless of what the zoning administrator is doing as opposed to repeating it?
Jackie, you and I can look into that, can't we?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions on administrative review and action before we move into the other sections of Chapter 10?
Amy?
Thanks, John. And thanks so much, Patrick, for your time yesterday, I really, really appreciated it. I did have one more policy type of question that I thought it might be useful to, to raise, and that's regarding the sign permitting process, which is page seven of twenty-one. Reading through that caused me to look back at the sign portion of chapter six, I think it was, and just take note of how many signs, temporary signs actually require permits, which I thought was maybe a little onerous and a little much. Everything from window signs to, you know, temporary banners on walls. Ah, chapter seven, and it is page five of chapter seven. So we require, under temporary signs, we require permits through this for everything except for A-frames, post-signs, and yard signs, which to me, when, when I'm reading through the sign permitting process, it seems like it might be a little bit much, given that it's, given that they're intended to be temporary signs. I do understand if we're looking to have temporary signs there for a limited period of time, that, that in the same way with the food trucks, you have to have some measure of control over them. But I'm wondering if folks might be amenable to having some signs slightly, having more of the sign categories under temporary signs be allowable, or possibly tightening the timeline for approval, at least for temporary signs. Because I think right now it's, you know, I'm twenty-five business days, so it could take somebody over a month to get a temporary sign approved. And I know staff typically does it much more quickly than that, but it does seem like it might be a little bit onerous. Thanks.
So typically in commercial districts, you would have some sort of permitting process for temporary signs, just like you said, to enforce those duration of display restrictions. It could be appropriate for window signs, temporary window signs, for example, to allow those without a permit. But I would recommend for the wall-mounted banner signs, ground-mounted banner signs, feather signs, those other types of temporary signs in your non-residential areas to require a temporary sign permit for their display.
Thanks, that's helpful. So if I understand your recommendation, changing the window sign temporary from permitting across all of the districts to allowable, and then possibly looking at tightening the timeframes on reviewing those applications, I think could be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, and then one additional comment back on page nineteen, and perhaps we've already, I've already made this. But under D, variance conditions, it refers to the board, and everywhere else, we're saying the Board of Adjustment. And so it probably should be Board of Adjustment there also.
Okay, we can make that change, no problem.
Is there, under the special review use permit, is there a reason we're calling it a special review use as opposed to just a special use?
That's just, that's just what it's currently called.
Okay.
Special review use.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay?
And, one last thing, under special review use, and again, this is more grammatical, but B3, I wouldn't recommend having a sentence ending with a preposition. It's also been complied with.
What, what page are you on, Corey?
I am on page fourteen of twenty-one. B3.
Okay, we can clean that up, no problem. All right, so moving into our Board and Commission general review and action procedures. So these tables are very similar to those that are included in the Plan Development Standards chapter, as well as the subdivision chapter. So our first table here summarizes who is responsible for recommendation and decision-making, for our special review use permits, text and map amendments and variances. And then the next table, details of which notice methods would be required for those public hearings. And so this general review and action procedure section includes the general application requirements. So that would be sort of the, the steps that all of the Boarding Commission general review and action procedures would be required to go through. So the pre-application conference would be with the zoning administrator. And that, during that conference, they would review the requirements of the application, the expectations of the city and the UDC. Then the application would be submitted. The zoning administrator would review the application and generate a report as to whether the application complies with the requirements of the UDC or does not. So based on that report, the applicant would then submit a revised application if necessary. And then the next steps of the process would be picked up in our specific sections for special review use permits, text and map amendments and variances. And we are not proposing any major changes to these processes. So the text that is in Chapter 10 currently is, or that is proposed to be in Chapter 10 is what is in your zoning ordinance currently. Any questions on the Board and Commission general approval procedures or on our specific processes?
So I have a policy point that I would like to raise and get some feedback on. Right now, every time we have a published notice that's required, it gets published in the newspaper of daily circulation locally, which in our case is the Canyon City Daily Record. Now, I don't know how you all feel about newspaper publications and whether or not they're being read as often and as frequently as they once were. A lot of communities have been going to having published notice done via the city's website. We can easily create a webpage under Community Vitality that's all about active applications that are heading towards public hearing, and this is the posting information and the narrative and the hearing date, et cetera. And then from the main page, we can have a hot link that goes right to that, that posted notice page. I believe this, because we wouldn't have to pass through a cost on the publication to an applicant, would be a cost savings to applicants. And I want to know how all of you felt about making that kind of a change.
I can support that.
Okay.
And we're even getting nods of affirmation from our attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I would do, I would put some language that is permissive, because we don't know what other future manners of notice there may be, but I agree that having us tied to newspaper publication in today's world doesn't make sense.
Great. Okay.
All right, so our next chapter is Chapter 11, non-conformities. So we are not proposing any major changes to the content of this chapter except for the proposed elimination. except for the proposed elimination of a couple of sections. The first one, termination of nonconforming uses. We were advised by Catherine that the state is no longer allowing the amortization of nonconforming uses. So to be compliant with state statute, we are eliminating that section. And then we're also proposing to eliminate the limited preservation of certain uses as permitted uses and related structures within the MH1 zoning districts. So this section allowed for nonconforming, like convenience stores and other types of nonresidential uses within mobile home parks. And based on conversations with staff and with Catherine, it was determined that that really was no longer necessary. There weren't any, you know, developments taking advantage of that nonconforming provision currently. And the other zoning districts that are being proposed, especially the neighborhood commercial district, would accommodate that type of nonresidential use in close proximity to our residential areas. So it was proposed that this section be eliminated. Any questions or concerns about the proposed changes to chapter 11?
Questions or changes on chapter 11? I do have one comment under the rebuild letters, C. We put rebuild letters in quotes. Previously, when we referred to it, we capitalized everything. Rebuild and letters, all capitalized. I would recommend we do that there.
Okay, that's no problem.
What page is that?
So I'm on page two of four, under chapter 11.
Okay.
Under C, rebuild letters.
Rebuild letters, yes. And we have done a number of these in the years that I've been here. Obviously, Canyon City being the age that it is, we have a number of nonconforming situations when it comes to things like setbacks or yard area lot size. So this gives mortgage companies some comfort that if something happens to the home, the asset that they are lending against can be rebuilt.
Great, I think we're ready to move on.
Very good. All right, so our last and final chapter is chapter 12, definitions. So for this section, we revised it to eliminate any unnecessary definitions. So those would be, for example, uses that are listed in your current zoning ordinance that aren't being carried forward in the new one. Some outdated definitions were revised that are relying with the comprehensive plan as well as just with modern understandings of some of the terms. And then we've also added new definitions for all of the uses that have been added, including the new sign types that are proposed to be included. We will do a final review of chapter 12, ensure that we have eliminated all of the unnecessary definitions. We will check, do a keyword search for any of the existing definitions to ensure that they are actually terms or phrases that are used within the UDC. So we will ensure that that gets cleaned up just as much as possible. So any questions or comments on chapter 12 definitions?
Have some questions or comments? Kirk?
On page 14 of 26, it's just some material recovery facility and medical marijuana for personal use. It looks like they need to just be put in their own category. Under D, you'll see material recovery facility. And then underneath that, under F, I think your mineral deposits commercial should be another category.
Yeah, and those were two of the corrections that John noted when I met with him last week.
Okay. Any others? I've got a couple that I'd like to talk about. One is under as-built drawings, which has been kind of a burr under my saddle. And if Jim Meisner was here, he would know exactly who I'm talking about. But the as-built drawings, it says, it tells what they should be and how they're submitted for original approval. And it says, "All drawings should be signed and stamped by qualified professional engineer licensed in the state of Colorado." And so my question is, Ryan and Patrick, does that apply to our city's as-built drawings? Do we, are we going to require a professional engineer stamp on city as-built drawings? And you can take this under advisement. I don't need an answer here tonight. But the issue is that I know from personal examination that we have as-built drawings that are not accurate and do not meet this definition of an as-built drawing. And one of the cures for that is to have all as-built drawings signed off by a professional engineer so that if there are discrepancies, the appropriate state board can deal with the matter in addition to the city. So please.
I would want to make sure we include the Public Works Director in that conversation as well. But yes, I see the point you're making, absolutely.
Thank you.
And for what it's worth, I agree completely because what we are buying when we buy a design in part is the stamp.
Exactly, yes. And perhaps I've made this comment already, and if I have, please forgive me. But on page nine of the definitions, family, under number two, it says, "A group of not more than eight adult persons who need not be related by blood, marriage, or adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling, plus in either case domestic help or caregiver." And that was not clear to me, what that, what the either case plus or what exactly we're trying to say there. I think we're saying, trying to say, in addition, you get these two besides the eight is what I believe the intent is, but it needs a little bit of clarification there. And then on page 123, under home occupation, and this is just a word choice thing, but something I recommend that we do. Says, "Home occupation means an occupation carried on in the dwelling or accessory building by members of the family occupying the dwelling with no servant, employee, or other person." And I suggest we don't say servant, that we say domestic worker, perhaps, or something like that.
We can certainly change that. I don't believe that that definition has changed from what it is in our current code right now.
That's, that's, thank you, I appreciate that. But it's still my recommendation.
So that changed, that is in the definitions.
Yes, that's in the definitions. And then on page 14 of 26, microbrewery. It says, "A small facility for the production of malt beverages of low alcoholic content." And low is ambiguous there. It either needs to say a numeric limit or something, whatever's in, you know, conformance with state regulation. But low is kind of an ambiguous word.
And my hunch is that that language is leftover from when there was 3-2 beer.
I'll drink to that. And then back on page 17 of 26, we define patient means a person with a debilitating medical condition. And so my question is, is that really what we want that word to mean, patient? Because that's not the usual definition of what a patient is. And so I'm just pointing that out. I don't know, we'll have to do a word search to see where we use it to make sure that that is the appropriate definition for that use, I would suggest.
And if I may, if we can go back to the microbrewery. Corey or Jackie, there's a definition in the building code that triggers certain thresholds over a certain percentage alcohol. I would recommend that we use that as the threshold for microbrewery.
Great.
And then on page 22 of 26, where we kind of define sexually oriented business, and it says it should have the same meaning as described in section 5.42. I recommend that we just put the, pull that definition forward to here. That's part of the reason for a definition section is to have people, let people have a place where they can look up what things mean. And then my final comment is on page 26 of 26, under vision clearance area. And the last sentence starts talking about, starts using the word shall. And when you're using the word shall, that's mandatory, and that's regulation, that's not definition. So I recommend that last sentence be moved forward into the appropriate section. And that's all my comments.
Very good. Were there any other comments or questions on chapter 12?
Yeah, Corey?
Two, one on the vision clearance area, and this is just a suggestion. Again, in many codes, I see a picture that goes along with the definition. For this particular definition, and it just, often for someone who is not familiar with what that is, it is easier to understand what it means. And the other is a more broad suggestion, and that is not to have the subsections by letter throughout the code, because frankly, when we go to amend definitions at some point in the future, it just makes it more confusing. And so frankly, my recommendation would be to have one section and not have each letter be a separate section. It just makes for confusing revisions later.
So for the vision clearance, we do have a graphic included in chapter six, the development standards, where we provide greater detail on what those vision clearance areas are. We could also move that to the definition section if we think that would be helpful. The purpose of the separate headings for the different letters is really just for ease of use, to ensure that someone is more easily able to navigate the definitions chapter and find what they're looking for more quickly and more easily. But if the city would prefer to combine those to make amendments easier, we'd be happy to do that. So that is definitely a preference for the city.
Corey, let me suggest a compromise on that point. I think separating the definitions out by letter of the alphabet. So you've got, for instance, W is 1712230. I don't have an objection to that. But for what you're saying about making amendments, if we ever need to add a definition somewhere, I think you can take the individual letters, like A and B. Watchman's quarters is A and winery is B. And then if you're going to amend the letter W with a new definition, you just do an amendment, 1712230, to include this new definition.
This is purely a policy issue. I have never seen it put together like this. That doesn't mean it's a bad thing. It is just much different from any zoning code definition section I've seen. And I, you know, if you can choose to revise it, you can choose to compromise. It's not hard and fast, it's just ease now and ease in the future.
I would just point out, most people use a dictionary and look for the particular letter heading for the word. So this makes sense to me.
So what would you do with the individual headings for each definition then, Patrick? And under your suggestion?
I would just say, rather than having A, period, watchman's quarters, you just have it begin with watchman's quarters. And then the one underneath that is winery. There is no A and B.
Gotcha, right.
I think that's a good compromise.
Sure.
Because it's a lot of definitions, and so it is helpful to have, if needed.
Did you have something, Amy?
Just if we are going with that compromise, we may also want to add in the numbers for any letters that don't currently have definitions under them. So, for example, I don't know what would ever start with X, but right now we don't have an X, so we may want to add in T, U, V, W, X. 1712230, or 1712240, X, and reserve it. Just to go to Corey's point about not having to amend it later. Just to further the compromise, I suppose.
I think that's a good idea.
G'day, g'day on the alphabet.
Okay. Do we have, is that all of the business before us then? Any other comments or questions or comments on the process that we're using here?
So the only thing I would like to say in addition, and this was an idea that Catherine had. In fact, when we got together last Monday, she mentioned this to me. So right now, Title 16 primarily has Appendix A, which is all of the processes for subdivision and site plan regulations, which have now been woven into this document. The remaining portion of Title 16 that is not part of Appendix A are annexation procedures, which you'll recall, last year, we revised to make them consistent with state statute. That takes approximately a page and a half to two pages of text at most. So Catherine's suggestion was that we simply move that into Title 17 as well. And then Title 18 contains all of the vested property rights provisions, which, again, is not a particularly lengthy section. I think it's maybe four or five pages. But her idea was to also add that as a section to this code as well, right before definitions, so that we could effectively leave Titles 16 and 18 at this point reserved for future use should the city ever need it. And all of these regulations pertaining to land use and development would be consolidated into Title 17.
See no objections here on the dais.
Okay. Corey, did you have anything to add on that point?
No, I think Catherine probably needs to meet with the two of you, with Patrick and Jackie, to make sure, because we can't tell frankly if some of the comments have been incorporated in some of the earlier chapters. So I just want to make sure that those have been incorporated.
Certainly.
Okay.
And we are going to take our time. Unlike the comprehensive plan, which we are required with the grant that we've got to have that wrapped up before the end of June, the text of Title 17 that we're doing here, we're going to take a bit more time with this. We'll hopefully be getting it to Planning Commission for their review late in June, and then it will come to council sometime in July at that point.
Great. And with that, hearing no other business before us, I think we're adjourned.